With review purchase orders over $7,000 in invoices.
Anybody have any questions?
I got a question on a small invoice. It's nothing big. So Lynn, I was looking at page 13. Connecticut Technical and Engineering Education Association. One P O, two invoices for the exact same amount. And the same people. I didn't know if that was a duplicate or it was invoice 01519 and 01520, both for $125.
One is for Michael Ieveroni. And one is for Jared Fernandez and one is for Jessica Spinelli.
Okay, because that's not how it read. It had all three names under each one. That's why I was questioning it. That's why I thought maybe it was a duplicate. It was two invoices, one P O, two invoices.
It's actually three invoices on one P O.
Okay, I didn't see the third one. I just saw.
Fourteen.
All right, so each individual is $125. Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mary Ann, Jen, you got anything? No? All right, we'll go on to budget transfers.
Anyone have any questions regarding the budget transfers?
I don't have any questions. Anybody got any questions?
Okay.
All right, all right, we'll move on to the health insurance report and the alternative bid for transportation.
Our health insurance continues to be in line with what we projected for the year. We currently are just 285,000 under what we've put in year to date. We still have more money coming in from all of the teachers and everyone who has insurance co-pays and the TRB, and there's some more grant money that will come along eventually. And I think we're doing well this year. We are in line.
All right.
Questions on it?
All right. Any questions on the health insurance report? All right, what's the story with that alternative bid?
So for the alternative bids, we put our RFP out for transportation with the busing. We received four bids back. With those four bids, two companies submitted alternative bids. One for a different quantity of hours for the routes that we provided. The second being an alternative bid for an older fleet of buses that were used. So based on receiving those two alternative bids, we think it's best to give the opportunity to all other companies that submitted a bid to give an alternative bid as well. So we'd like to go out this week, give them a week to get back to us on those alternative bids. We can compare the same bids against each other.
Sounds like a good idea to me. Anybody got any questions?
No, I like hearing that word bid, Tommy. Out to bid.
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right, I'm good. If everybody's good, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Finance Subcommittee.
Second. Call to order, Board of Education, Buildings and Grounds meeting, 6:30 PM. I'm sorry, 6:32 PM. I'm going to just put on record here because I don't, this is coming forth just being beyond scrambled. I asked for information at the end of the hour, so to speak, because I was unavailable at all this week to communicate with anyone. I apologize if I didn't return anyone's phone calls or emails. Some family trying times. So I'm just pretty much going to need a little bit of assistance from individuals regarding actual activities that occurred that I'm not privy to at this point because I just got quick emails sent back to me. So first, number one is obviously for Buildings and Grounds, bullet point bids for East Haven backstop for softball and baseball fields. I always receive, I've received a little bit of information that the process has begun, but just if there's anything left out, Lynn, if you don't mind chipping in or am please, I'd appreciate it.
We're bringing forward the bids to the board to look at tonight.
Other than what else we have presented before, is that nothing else regarding that at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Anthony, are you on yet?
Yeah, I'm here.
Anything regarding, no hookups, nothing? Everyone's fine with everything there?
Yeah, facilities are moving well. We had a little hiccup. One of the skylights was leaking.
No, I admit, I apologize. I'm just regarding the field because some just came, was brought before me about some complaints regarding this, the sexual project regarding the backstops. Anything I have to worry about regarding the field, anything that's not correct where people would be complaining?
No, everything, the specs were good. We went through the specs with Coach Grisafi and Mr. Johnson. They reviewed everything. Mr. Stacy came for the bid, for the walkthrough process. Everything has been copasthetic and just looking to hopefully get a good decision tonight.
No, I'm grateful and I read it. It is on point. There's nothing that stands out to me. It was just.
Please, it's Jack. Just to jump on what Mr. Verderam said, I was at the walkthrough. I think there were seven to eight different companies there. Mr. Verderam was very precise and specific as to what he wanted and how it should be done. We watched all of the various companies take out their measuring devices and do all of the measurements that were necessary. And, you know, excited to see what's going to play forth and to get this stuff done to make this feels what they should be. So thank you.
No, absolutely. And Anthony's always thorough and that's awesome. I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing that was standing in the way. We've actually had some unnecessary media about anything in all to do with similar situations, bids, whatever. I just wanted to make sure everything was good.
At least RJ here, if I could jump in quick.
Yeah.
Just to mention as well, I believe when this came to the board for the first time, it was presented as a package deal. We went out to bid for the backstops and the perimeter fencing that was going to come from the bottom of the hill up to the end of the softball field.
Yep.
So what happened was they were bid out separately as two jobs. Each, each bid came back with specs for both jobs coming with the total. When those were received, we sat down, myself, Mr. Vinnie, the principal of the high school. We sat down with the athletic director and Erica, and we decided that that perimeter fence may not be the most pleasing to the eye by what we're doing. So we decided to go forward with the backstop fencing and regroup and go out to bid again on something that would look a little bit better to our campus rather than going forward with both at this time. So that's why tonight you're seeing the Atlas bid coming forward just for the backstops.
Okay. Um, well, that's another great thing you pointed out was multiple complaints about some things possibly being eyesore. So that's great that it was identified early on, so we won't have to do any kind of backpedaling. So.
Correct. So we should be regrouping with that in the next week. We'll be getting some ideas together and hopefully get a bid back to you guys by our next board meeting so we can move forward with that timely as well.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, very much.
And Lisa, just in addition, the, you know, the funding for the recommended vendor for the replacement of the baseball and softball backstops is going to come out of the operational budget and we may have to make a budget transfer to accommodate such.
What's the timeframe going to look like on the transfer?
Once we know, once we know that the board tonight approves, the vendor will bring forth the transfer in the next set of transfers.
I'm only asking again to avoid, just want to make sure that the timeline is kept tight and we know when it's going to be moved over. So well, I need to be aware because I don't want to be having to answer unnecessary questions later on. Just, just putting down timelines. Thank you very much, Erica. Um, again, I apologize. Can you just give me one second, please? All right, my apologies on that. Before I move forward to item number two, anything additional? The board? That'd be a no. So, okay, moving forward to number, well, point two, Buildings and Grounds. Update, overall update, overall updates, field updates. I do have some stuff, Anthony, you and I talked about. Obviously, we talked about the backstops. Uh, talk about the leak, but is there anything additional besides the leak that you'd like to discuss?
Yes, I'm sorry. There was a minor leak yesterday in the skylight. Mr. Horton and all America went up there, addressed the situation, covered it. The vendor was here today to take a look at it and the situation will be rectified.
What's the status on the football field slash soccer field or whatever? Is it completed?
Yes, we had the final walkthrough a couple of months ago. Everything is all set. There's just one payment we still have to make. It's the 47,000 dollar retainer. We're holding that because there was one of the subcontractors had not gotten paid yet. I'm in conversations with Mr. Keely and the vendor trying to amend that situation.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I had said that if you all recall, especially Jack, we discussed it and the reason why it was held off was just for, just cautious. That's all we're being was cautious because of the, the not obviously the payment, but also just being cautious about other areas. Is that fair to say? And I'm saying it because it was held up for so long and there's still remainder payment left. So I'm explaining that when you and I discussed it, it was this, it was the outcome of the discussion was that we needed to just hold off until the payment was complete. So nothing was said before and after that. There was nothing left before the job was totally completed. And a couple other character other matters, but is that fair to say?
Yes, it is.
All right, anything else additional about that?
No, but I'll keep you apprised. And as soon as we make that final payment, I will let you know. And again, I'll speak with Mr. Keely in Town Hall and make sure that everything is handled appropriately.
Okay, um, thank you very much. Regarding the leak, this has been a day of phone calls to ensure that things are being fixed and done accordingly. I've had the end, at the end when it was completed, I, all positive, nothing to be left. It's all done, completed. Anything else?
The leak hasn't been fixed yet. It's been covered over with a tarp and everything. The leak, the leak will be fixed later this week. I just put in a purchase order based on the the quote that we got today.
And Lynn, it wasn't the roof, it was the skylight, right?
Skylight broke and it caused a leak into the gym, which they immediately cleaned up all the mess and had things there, tar pollen, to keep the new floor from warping. And they also tarped around the top, but it does need to be fixed. It needs to be.
So I will, I will back up just to be on record that it's not, it was the roof, I mean, the skylight, not the roof. I received multiple emails. I know, I'm just putting on record because I said it wrong. So, and it's being worked on and currently maintained, not fixed.
It should be fixed this week as long as the purchase requisition gets approved by the superintendent.
Great, just keep me informed as to what transpires, please. Not the day of would be great.
I will.
Well, whoever would be obviously just, whether it's the administration, just someone say something not a few minutes before the meeting. Because then, besides normally rambling this, it delays it even additional rambling, as some may say. Okay, the sound system, I was told there's some holdups, some delays due to parts not being available. I had, I think it was the last meeting I had discussed the progress and the, what's going on up until the last meetings. Things are moving along. Everyone was happy. And then there was a possibility of a holdup due to parts. So I think that that was covered back then and it did actually happen. So everyone, you made everyone aware. So thank you. It was Anthony Lynn and I think Laura Lynn. So thank you for keeping me, you know, informed of that then. So now we're, it didn't come at us, you know, out of nowhere. You said, Anthony, that there's, you know, you're happy with the company and everyone's, you know, all the people in the buildings are fine. No concerns of anything, safety, nothing, correct?
No, it's a very professional company. They work on many universities. The foreman is actually an East Haven resident. His kids came through the school system, played sports. We're very familiar with him. And it's going well. It's just in the current climate nowadays, there's a lot of things on backlog. And we're just waiting for the shipments to come in.
It's a supply chain issue. They're having problems with the supply chain.
No, they're actually, no complaints, very good. And I am happy that this is all going well. And I know the schools will be really happy because I watched, there's also something you can watch online too about the company other than what you had showed us, like the name yet. So it's pretty cool to watch your little video, just to be just a little more enlightened. Regarding any other buildings, just, just some concerns from some parents. Nothing that has not been, you know, as easy as a phone call. So I don't have anything outstanding. Does anyone else have anything additional they'd like to add? Please do if you do, because I literally have been out of whatever, the wire for, it's been two weeks. So I haven't been, I didn't receive any phone calls or anything. So I really am unaware other than this, this last today and some emails. So yes, anything, just let me know, okay, guys? And I'll make the proper updates and referrals I need to make. Okay, just keep posted.
Lisa, I think you covered everything that was on the agenda and, and more. So if you don't mind, I'll make a move to adjourn at this time.
Okay, so call to order this evening's meeting at 7:01. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can have the flag, please. Awesome. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
The nation under God, indivisible.
All right, Melissa, I'm not going to forget. If you want to go ahead and do roll call attendance.
All right. Tia De Palma?
Here.
Jennifer Delongo?
Here.
Thank you. Lisa Dracey Anastasia? Don't see her anymore. Tom Hennessy?
Yes, I'm here.
Tom Murco? Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Here.
Erica Santiago?
Here.
Jack Stacy?
Yes, here.
And Michelle Dulucia?
Here.
All right.
Okay, so I just checked in with Lisa to see if she got disconnected. She's clicking. Is she in a waiting room or something? Melissa, there's no waiting room, is there?
No, there isn't. I'm checking to see if she's in the attendees.
Sorry, no, my husband was just upstairs telling me he can't get on either. He's trying to click on and he can't join the meeting.
Talking here.
Okay. Right.
I had a problem getting back.
Okay, so there might just be a connection issue at this time. Not so much.
I see you, Lisa.
All right, okay, let's go ahead and get started. For Chair Report this evening, I don't have much. Just wanted to let everyone know that Channel 19, that's part of ETV, is also known as Yellow Jacket Television, will begin airing Board of Education meetings at 7:00 AM, 1:00 PM, and 7:00 PM. Just so everybody knows. We still do have it right now streaming on YouTube. But it will also be available on E H TV. And that's all I really have this evening. Do I have any committee reports, Subcommittee reports? Mr. Palma? Personnel, policy?
Okay, I'm unmuted, right? You can hear me now?
Yes.
Um, negotiations are moving forward with Paris custodians. That's all we're doing right now, correct? Yes, I'm sorry. I'm a little foggy still. So, um, and, and we're progressing nicely.
Okay, Jack?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to when the superintendent and Anthony want to talk a little bit more. I have nothing. Just a congratulations to the girls' basketball team on a big win tonight.
Great, thank you. And then Erica, wait, I thought yours is policy. I said Tia's policy, but your policy. I completely forgot.
Nothing for policy. We did put forward the policies that we spoke about in our workshop. I feel that we discussed them enough. If anyone has any questions, I think we could discuss them during this discussion portion of the meeting.
And just to clarify, going forward, we're going to do workshops by series, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, and Tommy, we had just had finance. Do you have anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, great. I think that I got everyone. Lisa, you just did Buildings and Grounds. Anything else you needed to add or you're good to go?
I would like to add just state for all Buildings and Grounds, all the projects are moving forward nicely. And very happy to see that things are going along as scheduled. So thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Uh, moving on, I'm, never mind. Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Before I get going here, I'd like to officially welcome Richard Cappanera, our Chief of Operations and Fiscal Oversight, to his first board meeting, official board meeting. We're pleased to welcome RJ as our new COFO. He is an East Haven graduate. He has a diverse accounting and finance background and various private school operations and fiscal management experience. He hit the ground running just over a week ago and it's been great to have him on board. So thank you for being here this evening, RJ. Jennifer Murray, he held a Curriculum Advisory Council meeting tonight, this afternoon at 4 o'clock, and I'm sure she'll provide you an update in her report coming up. Our East Haven High School Gallery 35 has a virtual art show coming up. It is 2020, a look back. It's a virtual art show expertly produced by East Haven High School Art and Media Department staff. And it really showcases the talents of our students and our arts and our media programs. It's hanging in physical form in Gallery 35 located in the foyer of the auditorium. But the show will run between February 15th and April 1st, and I'll continually circulate that link so you can get a glimpse at the amazing media art created by our students under the guidance of their excellent art teachers. Um, we, Anthony Verderam is going to provide us update. So Anthony, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Ms. Forty. Winter season is progressing very well. All the athletes are healthy. We had a couple quarantines, a couple hiccups here and there, but all teams are full go. We are very, very happy and looking forward to the numbers when they come out from the Health Department. This Thursday, when the numbers come out, we're going to sit down and reevaluate our spectator policy. And we should have something to put forward by Friday or Monday of next week. Other than that, again, thank you to Ms. Dracey for her assistance with the facilities. Thank you to Mr. Stacy for always being available. And one of our biggest cheerleaders. And that's all for now.
Thank you. As many of you know, the state released information regarding the vaccination of teachers and educators across Connecticut. We are currently preparing the things that we need to have accomplished before the March 1st open. I have a meeting tomorrow with East Shore Health and area superintendents and their health departments to brainstorm and talk further about the details of such. We are still awaiting information on the timeline for delivery of the vaccinations, vaccination, or the vaccine, rather, and the quantity of vaccine that we are to receive. The state has asked that we remain patient and they are using the entire month of March to vaccinate pre-K through 12 educators, early childhood workers, private school individuals. And so it could mean you get that, the vaccine on March 1st, but it could also mean you get the vaccine on March 31st. I've been in communication with our staff and our vendors who work in our school system. And as more information and details become available, I'll be sure to update the board, the community, and everybody who is to receive the vaccine. And I believe for me, that is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Jen, Assistant Superintendent's report. Mrs. Murray?
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm in the dark. Here I go. That's better. Um, so I wanted to say that we had a wonderful turnout at today's Curriculum Advisory Council. I think we had a total of 15 people and more registered, although I do really think that many may be joining us. Those recordings do take some time to process in our Zoom webinar system. But we should have those up for anybody who's interested to view those recordings tomorrow morning at some point, or tomorrow afternoon, I think, to be gracious. Um, we welcome families to continue to join us at our Curriculum Advisory Council, the purpose of which is to increase transparency and communication. Tonight, we enjoyed a conversation with Lisa Philius around the initiatives related to the vision of the graduate, helping identify a North Star of where we're going so that our graduates really, really aim to achieve at high levels. We also heard from Juliet Goriab about the developmental guidance curriculum and the student success plan, which their efforts have been looking at various data points to determine next steps and revisions and improvements. We spoke regarding updates to the K to five report card revision, provided a timeline. And additional information about parent focus groups will be forthcoming. We also were able to hear a presentation from Dr. Marangial regarding a recommendation for a curricular resource entitled History Alive for the eighth grade curriculum. Their material for choosing this, this was pretty robust. They examined it for cultural responsiveness, alignment to the social studies standards, and a committee of individuals really, really looked at a lot of the different things in in light of the needs of students and what the data is showing students could work on, including argumentation, critical reading and writing in both nonfiction and fiction related to themes and discourse, discussion strategies and dynamic teaching that's engaging for students. So you will be seeing that proposal in an upcoming invoice from TCI. So you will be seeing that proposal in an upcoming invoice from TCI, and the information and materials are available, I believe, for your review in the format for curricular resource adoption. I also had the pleasure of attending some of our early intervention team attendance, building data team, and building leadership team meetings over the last couple of weeks. And I want to say how impressed I am with the design of these meetings where principals and their building leaders, including interventionist coaches and teachers in many cases, and our people services staff, who are really discussing and reviewing where students stand after the middle of the year assessment cycle. So those conversations are really rooted in what we know is working, what they can do to improve, comparing performance levels in math and reading. One thing that I noted today at Mamaw when they were looking at the last two years and identifying those clear adult actions. So I just am really impressed with the level of conversation around student data, and I would encourage everybody to thank the teachers that are working really hard to identify those areas of focus where we can close skill gaps and get kids engaged in learning. Our district is also excited to welcome Tiffany Young as a featured keynote speaker. She will be speaking to an audience of teachers interested in learning more about how to use community and student engagement strategies to help with personal and professional growth. Her keynote is entitled "From Pain to Purpose: Empowering Our Youth and Ourselves in the Age of COVID-19." Ms. Young was awarded the 2020 Oprah Winfrey Award for Leadership and Exposure and was honored as one of the 100 Women of Color Making a Difference in Connecticut at the Bushnell in 2019. I will include a link to the paper copy of the Assistant Superintendent's report, which will be uploaded into the drive, and I believe we are able to keep a recording of the keynote for those that wish to seek to view it. And finally, families of students in grades K through 5 are encouraged to reach out if they would like to be on the elementary school report card committee, and/or they can be involved by attending parent focus groups where we're going to seek feedback and information regarding the report card process. Our next Curriculum Advisory Council meeting will be held on April 27, 2021 at 4:00 p.m. Items on the agenda will include Atlas overview, assessment calendars, and pathways initiatives to Haven High School, and any other agenda items as parents, as they become available. Thank you so much, and that is all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Hennessy?
How much does it cost for Tiffany Young?
Twenty. The consultant's day rate, according to her presentation rate, is $2,500.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Jen, Jen, Lisa, if you don't mind me, I didn't have the whole hand thing up. Did you, you might have shared the timeframe of how she'll be coming in for consulting. What is the timeframe?
Her, she's had consulting meetings with us, and the keynote presentation itself is on the afternoon of our Flex Friday. And it will begin, it will begin 1:00 p.m., I believe.
So just regarding the cost thing, obviously, not that they're standard fees, but she'll do the keynote, and you said, and she spoke earlier, is anything going to be an additional cost? Because when I observe speeches and go to trainings, there can be many follow-up questions, emails. Is it going to be a flat fee? I mean, right here, are we going to go for?
That's a flat fee, and in comparison, keynotes have ranged depending on the consultant fee. You know, we tried to work to provide it high-quality presenters. That's on the lower range of some of the keynotes that we've been quoted. But it is a flat fee, including consulting with the District for Personalization, Customization, and that's.
I'm just asking because it can't change.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Ms. Erica?
It's grant-funded.
Oh, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it myself, actually. I got my invite yesterday.
Thank you, just.
Are there concerns about the cost of, or is there any?
My question was because I have been, I've set them up, and the cost can go further than the actual quote and what you agree upon. I'm not saying it's going to be the case here, and I'm sure that the speech, her speaking is going to be amazing. I just wanted to know if it was something flat, or we would.
We have in writing it as a.
I'm sure it's beautiful, it's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to approval of the meeting minutes from February 9, 2021.
Jack makes a motion to accept the meeting minutes of February 9, 2021.
Mary Ann, I will second that.
Anybody have any questions? If not, Melissa, roll call vote for the minutes, please.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Dracy and Anastasia? Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marion Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Dulutha?
Yes.
All in favor, question carries.
Okay, so that brings us to the consent agenda, where we have approval of invoices for fiscal year 2020, 2021 in the amount of 409,243.97, and approval purchase orders over 7,000. Do I have a motion?
Jack, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Mary Ann?
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Comments at this time? If not, I will ask Melissa for a roll call vote.
I just did.
Sorry. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Dracy and Anastasia?
Yeah, sorry, guys, yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marion Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Dulutha?
Yes.
All in favor? And sorry, the last one had one abstention.
Okay. All right, I am going to, hold on, because I sent something out today. We're going to move on to the audience of citizens portion for this evening, but I just wanted to go ahead and review the policy that we have, and it is that the board may, its policy 9325, the board may permit any individual or group to address the board concerning any subject that lies within its jurisdiction during a portion of the board's regular meeting, so designated for such purpose, and that it is three minutes allotted to each speaker with a maximum of 20 minutes to each subject matter. Just wanted to let you know that if there were a lot of speakers, we're to modify that not to go over the 20 minutes. We will be, Melissa will be timekeeper for the meeting. Also, I do remind everyone that there should not be any boisterous conduct or their speaking will be terminated. I'm reading, it says termination by the chairperson. I just don't like that terminology, but they will have to be muted, I guess, at that point. And just reminding everyone for all speakers to identify themselves by name and address. And that's it. Melissa, do we have anyone that's here to speak this evening?
Okay, at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please use the raise your hand option. I can allow you access to. It doesn't appear that it's raising your hands, but let me just make sure that the correct settings are. Yes, they are. Okay, it looks like someone has raised their hand.
Sounds silly, but I'm looking at my bottom. My header on the bottom, I don't see that option. I see the participants QA, the share button, just. I mean, I have a different system, so.
Okay, I'll look into that. Okay, okay, it looks like Lorena. Hey, Lorena, you have three minutes. If you could state your name and your address.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and school administrators. I appreciate the time and space. I just want to make sure that we recall some of the issues that we've discussed in public comment over the prior months and things that are outstanding and open right now. It was been a few meetings, but we did touch on the staffing shortages as being an important issue, and we haven't seen a lot of movement of that except the budget transfers that are tonight. I also want to make sure that we have, number two, the learning gaps, pre-pandemic and now in the pandemic. We need to make sure that we quantify what's happening in our school system across all grades. Number three, the communication factor. Our two-way communication right now, it's not ideal. We've had a couple instances with the snow and the remote learning where some announcements were not even done in Spanish. So that's concerning to me because we want to make sure that we live up to the messaging that you are sending, which is that you want two-way communication. And if there's any parents that have called or sent emails, they require a response. I'm also concerned about the 800 remote learning students and their ability to get food. We've been hearing from parents that because they work or there are other things happening, they're not able to make those two times at the high school and the middle school. And so those children are missing out on that nutritional meal that's federally funded. So I believe that money belongs to the children. And if there's any way that we can be creative thinkers and try to figure out how do we get this nutrition to children that need it in our town, I think it's going to go, it's going to be a good investment. And I did attend the Curriculum District Committee meeting. I think it needs a little bit more open structure so that parents' input is taken into account. And I believe that we've only had three meetings, so it's something that is new to the district and that deserves to be modified. And I want to make sure that our school administrators are open to the challenges that parents see, and that know that all parents are not vocal. I'm vocal because I really do care. I care about the children here because I live here, and I've lived here as a child. And it really matters to me that every child has an opportunity, including the ones that might not hit that graduation rate. We have to think of the outliers, the child that is not asking for help, the child that we don't know whether they're doing their homework, with the child that might not be getting reinforcement in the classroom because there's so much happening in the classroom. So I want to make sure that we can always strive for better, and that's what we have to do, to strive for better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, do we have any other speakers this evening?
Sorry, I was muted. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please use the raise your hand option. I don't see anyone.
All right, good. So I don't, no, no one is raising their hand, so we will move on to new business. So at this time, we'll move on to 7.1, Discussion and Possible Action on the Approval of Hires, Rehires, and Stipends. Do I have a motion?
Erica Santiago, make a motion to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends.
Jennifer Delongo, I'll second.
Okay, so at this time, does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, so if not, Melissa, roll call vote, please, to accept the list of hires, rehires, and stipends.
Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Dracy and Anastasia? Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marion Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy? Jack Stacy?
Sorry, I was muted, yes.
And Michelle Dulutha?
Yes.
And Lisa Dracy and Anastasia? Sadie, yes? Okay, this. Lisa?
I'm not sure why you cannot hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, sorry.
I don't think I'm ignoring you. I tried multiple times to respond to you. I am abstaining, Melissa. I'm not sure if you heard me.
Okay, thank you so much.
You got it? Sorry. It could be. Thank you.
It's okay. Eight in favor, one abstention.
Okay, moving on to 7.2, Discussion and Possible Action on the Approval of the Vendor for the East Haven High School Baseball and Softball Backstops. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Michelle.
Do I have a second?
A second, Jack.
Do you want to read the motion? Oh, yeah, the motion is to accept. Well, actually, we probably should discuss it to go over the superintendent's recommendation for vendor. I mean, I know we did it in subcommittee, but possibly.
Yes, so recommending Atlas Companies LLC in the amount of $52,000 to replace the baseball and softball backstops at East Haven High School.
Okay, just to ask, I know that it said that their proposal, because there is a price differential, they weren't exactly the lowest, but what was the proposal differences between the lowest bidder and Atlas?
I'm trying to pull it up, Michelle.
RJ, can you give us a little background on the three companies? The one at 40, and then there was one at 51, 111, and then Atlas was at 52.
Atlas was in Massachusetts. But they had done prior to this. The second bidder was from Manhattan.
Not sure if that's the reason.
All right, so the second bidder was from, I think, the Hartford area. And we couldn't, again, the bid wasn't as detailed, and the Atlas bid that we received was over the top, the specs we received were peppy. It was actually more than what we expected from them there, from Grant, Grandford, and hope to use them again in future, so we thought it would be to our benefit to use them. If Anthony can add, wants to add anything, but I believe we went out to the town as well and asked some others their thoughts on this, and Atlas was the one coming up.
Yes, I would just like to concur with your overall, combining both fence projects, they were the lowest, and we are looking to put that additional fencing in. This company was recommended from the town, and it was also recommended highly from other athletic directors who have used them in the past. Their bid specs were very detailed, and they exceeded some of our minimum requirements on the bid specs. And given the time sensitivity of this project, we feel as though Atlas will be the best vendor to get this done in the shortest amount of time as well.
Yeah, I'd like to also, a second, I thought it, we spoke about that, we spoke about the surrounding towns, how we made the calls. I made one very close by, same as you, and nothing but very, very, very good reviews. So other than a little bit of difference in money, I thought it was a great choice.
All right, so that would be the recommendation. So Lisa, do you want to restate your motion to include the vendor's name? Okay, so the motion. Okay, so the motion, um, being put, uh, before you is approval for at, is it Atlas, is that the full name? Atlas Companies for the baseball and softball backstops at the East Haven High School. Melissa, you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes. Tia de Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer De Longo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, so that brings us to seven point three, discussion and possible action on the review of policy nine zero three one. Which if I am looking at it, and this is, it's listed at nine zero three one A. Is that correct? And that would be bylaws of the board for employment of personnel and non discrimination policy. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Sorry, go ahead, Erica.
Uh, Erica Santiago, I'm making a motion to approve the, uh, review of policy nine zero three one.
Jennifer De Longo, I'll second.
Any questions? Okay, so if not, Melissa, I'm going to ask for a roll call for the, um, approval for the revi, for the is, was it revised? Is that what we're saying, or we just reviewed, reviewed, right?
Viewed.
Okay, for the review, to approve the review of, uh, board policy nine zero three one. A.
Okay, Tia de Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer De Longo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, so that brings us to seven point three. No, seven point four, I'm sorry, discussion and possible action, the approval of the revision of policy nine three two zero, which is board meeting procedure. And I think you're going to notice that, uh, we just added in, um, the, some revisions to the first paragraph, I believe.
Yes, we added in, um, materials for meetings within twenty-four hours.
Mm-hmm.
I think we also added in the wording of the special board meeting.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Jack Stacy, make a motion to accept, uh, policy nine three two zero.
Erica Santiago, I'll second that.
Any questions or comments at this time? All right, so I'll ask Melissa to do a roll call vote.
Okay, Tia de Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer De Longo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Uh, abstaining.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one abstention, motion carries.
Okay, so that brings us to seven point five, which is discussion and possible action on the approval of revision nine three two one. Uh, bylaws of the board, time, place, notification of meetings for and you'll notice we, what we did is we included special meetings and workshops into the policy. Do I have a motion?
Jennifer De Longo, I'll make a motion to approve policy, uh, what was it, nine?
Three, two, one, two, one.
Three, two, one. Nine, three, two, one.
Erica Santiago, I'll second that.
Are there any questions or comments on, on the policy? All right, so if not, I'm going to ask at this time for Melissa to do a roll call vote, please.
Tia de Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer De Longo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Sorry, you're on, um, you're abstaining, please, abstaining.
Abstaining?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one abstention, motion carries.
Okay, so that brings us to seven point six, discussion and possible action on the approval of revision of policy nine three two five point two, which is bylaws of board, of the board order of business. And we believe that's, that's it. Um, Erica, do you want to highlight exactly what we're changing?
On the nine three two five?
Yeah.
I think we just added in, um, roll call attendance, point two.
Okay, all right, so that was the only change. All right. And we saw we had attendance, but I guess not, okay. All right then.
I'll make a motion for this. Um, I make a motion that we approve the revision of policy nine three two five point two.
Marian, I'll second it.
Okay, did anybody have any questions? Comments? No? Okay, so at this time, Melissa, roll call vote, please.
Tia de Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer De Longo?
Yes, sorry.
It's okay. Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Abstaining.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Okay, eight in favor, one abstention, motion carries.
That brings us to seven point seven, our last, uh, agenda item of the evening, which is discussion and possible action on the approval of adopting the new policy, um, temporary policy CBD nineteen point seven. Um, and this is regarding electronic board meeting participation.
Uh, Michelle, if I could just mention, um, just for the record, we did speak about this in our, um, policy workshop. This is just the temporary, um, one, just we are waiting on the additional guidance from the state if we need to this more of a permanent policy. So I think this is what everyone had felt comfortable for those that attended the workshop.
Yeah. I agree.
And I can, um, make a motion if that's okay. Uh, motion to approve the adapting of the new policy CBD nineteen point seven.
Jennifer De Longo, I'll second.
All right, so did anybody have any questions or comments before we go to a vote? Tommy?
Tommy's muted. I'm still, I'm still in the camp of outside of COVID time, this is illegal. And we shouldn't have a policy for it.
That's why it's under the CBD to, uh, it accompanies just COVID policies. They're all temporary policies.
Yeah, it's, is that in it? Because I didn't see that.
Yeah, all the whole CBD series, CBD nineteen point seven, they all fall under temporary policy during COVID.
So when, when do they expire?
Is there an expiration exactly?
Well, we're still in, see, we're still in COVID times. I, I, I kind of, I agree with Tom. I don't even think this is necessary.
Yeah.
Sorry, that one, Tia.
There's a few of them that are under, we have a whole, um, list of them under CBD, again. If no one thinks we need it, we don't, we don't need it, but if we wanted to hold it under the CBD, since we do have electronic board meeting participation, we could, but again, uh, this is up to the board.
If you'd like to hold off on this, um, I am meeting with the superintendent at some point this week to start discussing the six thousand series. Um, we could come up with, um, a temporary COVID, um, maybe COVID policy to discuss, um, maybe, just maybe, just an overall to, so that when COVID is over, maybe a policy to kind of relinquish all these other policies, so that when it is over, it kind of.
I don't, I don't know if we need a policy to end it. Erica, is there any guidance from the state on those temporary policies that we were given?
No, just that they were temporary. They had different of COVID, uh, coding, CBD dash nineteen. Some of them are pretty specific, like mask wearing and social distancing. Um, but there was no guidance relative to the permanency, just that they were suggested temporary policies. With Erica, we can, I'll try to reach out to Cave prior and ask how, um, how the policy, there should be a clause or line in the public that indicates it is temporary and when the pandemic is over, that then be.
What are we talking about? A, a new policy that says COVID policies are temporary?
No, just a clause in the actual policy that says it may be temporary until the pandemic is declared over, at which point then we could, um, it could automatically determine, uh, terminate, but I'll reach out to Cave and get some guidance on a sentence.
Doesn't it say that in the whole beginning of the COVID series, that these are temporary policies that will end?
Like all CBD series?
Yeah, doesn't it?
Fall under?
I'd have to go back and pull them up to look at that exact language.
I want to say when we accepted them originally as the series, it, it did reference that.
We have, we have a motion, is it possible to, um, make a new motion, uh, table it?
We just don't have to vote on it. I mean, do we, do we want to accept it, or?
I think, um, at this point, I tend to, uh, waver or to lean towards what Tommy's saying, so I think maybe at this point, it's not something we want to do.
Yeah, it seems like there's too many questions around it.
Yeah.
Well, Michelle, you are right. I just picked it up quickly. CBD dash nineteen point one, temporary policies and regulations related to COVID. Talk about the policies and regulating, uh, regulations identified as, uh, being temporary. Um, and it has a whole bunch of language in it, so we can revisit that at, at the next policy subcommittee if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I remember that being a given. That's why they were this whole CBD series, because they're in a sense to be temporary, but we don't want to have anything about electric board meeting participation. Um, that was just putting out, uh, some boards do have it, they did put it in place.
Michelle, Tom has his hand raised for quite some time. Oh, I think he put it down.
No, he, I don't, did he put it about, Tom, you want to speak again? I'm sorry, I thought you left it up.
Uh, I want to know what the superintendent's recommendation is.
There you go. Here.
Since we are hosting electronic meetings, I suggest you keep it. And I will read you a clause in CBD dash nineteen point one, where it talks about the COVID nineteen policies and regulations shall remain in effect up to and including June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, unless otherwise noted in the individual policy or unless the board or administration, as appropriate, will ins or extends the term of any COVID nineteen policy and regulation through appropriate board or administrative action. Absent any further board or administrative action, as appropriate, effective July one, two thousand twenty-one, the COVID nineteen policies and regulations shall be repealed automatically. And the board's policies and administrative regulations in effect prior to the enactment of the COVID nineteen policies and regulations shall be reinstated.
In a way, I, I think this so, I, I think this might be helpful because I do want to make sure everyone realizes that in this policy, it does allow when we do return for in-person meetings that up until June thirtieth, board members who might wish to still join electronically can. That is what's included in this policy. I think as long as it has an expiration date.
Thank you, Marian, that's what I meant before, was the fine lines of adhering to that. That was my concern because
and this way, it has an expiration date of the end of the school year. I think that we could always extend it if we have to, but we are, it's built in.
Mm-hmm. And it, again, it just sets the parameters that board members who might not feel comfortable coming back or maybe in quarantine can still participate virtually when we do have in-person meetings.
I have a lot of concerns. I was just stating a point about the timeframe, as long as, you know, everyone's aware of that.
Michelle, I have my hand up. May I speak?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Mike, I, I don't understand, why haven't we been doing this then? So I, we I don't understand how this just pops up that we have to have this now. I'm willing to do whatever you want, but I don't.
I don't think we have to have it. I think this just puts a procedure in place. If you notice the last paragraph, it just says the procedure on what board members will do if, when we do go back to regular meetings, how they would have to request to participate virtually.
But we are, we've been participating for how long, virtually?
But we're all virtually. That last clause is for when we go back in person, if there's certain members who need to participate virtually with our meetings, there's a set procedure in place.
So Michelle, you gave the example, if a board member is placed in quarantine and there's a board meeting, they would have the, if we're meeting in person, they would have the opportunity to attend virtually under this policy.
Yes.
Why don't we enact it when we, if it comes up, at the end of, of quarantine?
Thank you, Tia, I don't have my hand thing, yeah, but.
At the end of quarantine? What do you mean? This is just for till June thirtieth during, during the pandemic.
But we're all, in case we go back before then, is that the point?
Yeah, what if we go back to regular meetings in April?
Let's just say next month, we, the, you know, we start meeting in person. And you are considered a close contact at school and you get put in quarantine and you can't come to the in-person board meeting. You would be able to attend that board meeting virtually from your home.
Thank you. That's all I needed to hear. I, I, my hand is not confused. Thank you.
My hand thing does not work. My apologies, or I don't know what's going on, but my question, I was trying to say multiple times, is that why can't it be informative like that? Is, is, is it needed to be said as a policy? If everyone thinks so, then great. I'm just stating, if it's an informative thing, we've been going, we've been doing this up until now. And if it's going to be something that's going to be something that we need to adhere to at a certain timeframe, why wouldn't it be more of an informative thing? No one thinks it could be informative?
Hey, I, I'm, I'm a little, I don't know if I understand your question, Lisa, I think.
I was thinking back on what Erica's, I mean, what you said to you, because, like I said, you guys could not hear me. You asked, why couldn't we just be informed? That was my, my point this whole time.
There's questions on whether it's legal for board members to participate virtually when we have in-person meetings.
Okay, again, that stating that last line, that would, that would differentiate whether it was legal or not legal?
Well, it just says that there's a policy during COVID times. It, it's what Cave has put together. If you guys don't want to do it, I, I honestly, that is absolutely fine with me.
No, I get what you meant now. I, I was confused. It doesn't mean anything, except if we go back before truly the end of the school year, but yet people aren't comfortable, or perhaps they're in quarantine, we, we are agreeing to let them from home. At once, six thirty-one or six thirty, excuse me, there is no six thirty-one, six thirty, that date. We, we then have to, you know, rediscuss what's going on, and by then we'll have stipulation perhaps from the state, so I do understand why we would pass this.
I would ask Michelle, if you can, I think we should. I would ask, Michelle, if you can, I think we should just, um, do a roll call vote on this. We do have the motion on the table. And I think we went through thoroughly through the, um, the workshop. Um, if you're, if you're okay with it, we did have a motion and a second on the table, and I think it was explained thoroughly. Cave has this policy for a reason, and I think obviously we're trying to, um, abide by more structure, so if you feel comfortable, I'd like to go forward with it.
Yeah, okay, Melissa, roll call.
Alright. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer De Longo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Estacia?
Abstain, sorry.
Uh, Tom Hennessy?
No.
Marian Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
No.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Okay, uh, two opposed, five in favor, one abstention, motion carries. And I do just want to correct, um, I was saying eight, four, but because of Mr. Murtaugh, we only have, we only have eight. I was saying nine before, including him in the count, so.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our meeting for this evening. We do have, um, our next finance subcommittee is March ninth at six thirty, and our next regular board of ed, meeting was, is March ninth at seven PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Erica Santiago, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, then, guys, I will see you on March ninth, meeting adjourned.